Good afternoon, everyone. Today is November 4th, 2025. It's 1:00 PM. This is a City of Prescott Study Session. We'll start off with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protemkan Tellmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Frerworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We have two items for discussion today. Item number A is a discussion on possible council direction regarding formation of a council subcommittee for hiring decision reviews. So I'm going to let Mayor Protemkan Tellmi kick this off since it was the formation of your idea.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is a request to encourage more communication and understanding between the department heads and council. This will be an advisory position only to the city manager and HR. This will only be a panel for the hiring of department heads. This is also an attempt to reduce the divide between the staff, some staff, and the council members. After all, we are all in this together. Council and staff are residents of Prescott. Presumably, we both want the best for Prescott. This will also provide some accountability to the hiring practices and encourage hiring highly qualified people, even if that means we have to advertise more than once. This allows the council to have some skin in the game when considering potential hirees in leadership roles. So the advisory committee, in my opinion, should probably be made up of about three council members or the mayor and two other council members. So I invite some discussion on that. For all the reasons I just cited, I think it would be a great idea. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I was intrigued when I saw this agenda item, and it kind of hearkens back to me to a discussion we had two years ago about the role of council and how we're a legislative body and not an administrative body. And I feel like hiring is an administrative action and is the duties and responsibilities of the city manager and those who work under the city manager. And I don't feel it's a role for city council as elected officials. I feel it's kind of an overreach, and it's more of an administrative function, not a legislative function. So I personally would need some compelling explanation why council would be involved in the hiring process, because that's certainly not in the city charter.
Can I, if you don't mind, Mayor? I'd like to read something.
Certainly.
I have this pamphlet from the League of Cities and Towns, and I want to read from it real quick. The Council Manager Form. The Council Manager Form of Local Government Cities, Towns, and Counties creates a bright line between the adoption of municipal policy and the administrative or operational functions of city staff. Under the Council Manager Form, elected officials on the council are ultimately responsible for making the policy decisions about city functions, budgets, tax rates, planning, zoning, general plans, long- and short-range city goals, contract approvals, et cetera. They receive information and recommendations from the city manager and generally oversee the performance of city government. They also are the link between citizens in the community and their local government. All government authority resides with the council as a body of elected officials. So I did want to clarify that. As an advisory group, if one were to be formed, it's basically that. It's advisory. The city manager can choose at any time not to take those recommendations, but I do think that the oversight would slightly produce a better outcome in terms of hiring. Now, we already have a policy that says, I believe it's in the charter, that if a director decides to void the hiree's qualifications, let's say the person that they want to hire does not have the qualifications set forth, they can write a letter to advocate for that person and why they want that person in that position. I think as a council, and again, I reiterate this, we are in this together. It's not the staff against the council. It's the staff and the council moving the city forward. So I just don't see it being a problem, and sometimes it might be actually a good thing to have another voice in hiring, just the directors at the director's level. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have several thoughts. My first question is, I'd be curious to hear from the city manager to hear what he thinks about it. I'd also be curious to hear from the city attorney what he thinks about, you know, moving forward and adopting an ordinance that opens the door for the kind of overreach that Councilman Moore was talking about, because I think there's a legal concern there. If we're not honoring what the charter says about the role of the city manager versus the role of the council, I don't think it's worth moving forward. But I ultimately just think this is a bad idea. I think it's trying to micromanage hires that the city manager makes, and at the end of the day, the city manager is ultimately responsible for the quality of the organization he hires. Our job is to hold the city manager accountable to who he hires, and I don't know that an advisory committee is necessary to do that. I think that happens every year when we renew the city manager's contract. So I don't understand the need to embed council this far down into the organization, and I don't think a corporation would have its board of directors doing this with hires either. You would not have members of a board of directors going down and hiring mid-level staff, because that would be a waste of time and resources. So to paraphrase what Councilman Gambogi said last week, I think this belongs on the trash heap of history.
Councilman Gambogi.
I think if we're to consider this proposal, it's important that we level set. And level setting is to understand the relationship between council and the city staff. This council is like the board of directors, and the CEO of this organization is the city manager. And the board of directors' job is to approve or not approve proposals that come from city staff for the betterment of the community. Now, if you believe that past performance is a good indicator of future performance, let's walk down memory lane. This is the council that abdicated responsibility for open space. Boards and commissions are very important to this city. When I was on a planning commission, we had Ken Mabarak, George Sheets, Terry Marshall. Those were experienced, knowledgeable people. But recently, the council's been picking members for the boards and commissions that I think are suspect, and the best example of that is the Preservation Committee, where the chair of the board of the Preservation Committee said, "Well, the code says you can't have more than three stories," and our legal counsel said, "The only thing in the code is you can't be higher than 48 feet." I don't think that presents a very good track record for micromanaging city management, so I'm not going to support this. And like my fellow councilmen said, this belongs like the last proposal on the trash heap of history.
Would you care to respond to that, Mayor Protem?
I just want to remind everybody, this is an advisory committee. That's it, just to advise. But I do believe it would help in keeping the feet to the fire in terms of raising our ability to hire people where the bar is up here and not here. There's a temptation at times to overrule the qualifications for these department heads and place somebody in those department heads, not because necessarily of what they know, but who they know. This is a very good way to prevent that from happening, for both of our sakes and to move our city forward. But I'll respect your opinion. You're allowed to have that. Thank you.
I mean, I'll just state that in general terms, I agree that we are a city manager form of government, and it's up to the city manager to decide and hold accountable all the people in his staff, from department heads on down. And that's how it should be. If the city manager is not doing that, or he's making poor decisions that generate controversy or poor performance or potential legal liability in the city, then it's up to the council to hold that city manager accountable and make sure that their performance meets the standards that we expect. But sometimes, when you look back over the last eight or 10 years that I've been on council, there's been some very questionable hires in department heads that made some pretty poor decisions that then had to be replaced. And then sometimes you'll have a city manager who doesn't come from the area and is not really familiar with maybe the history and the business community, and will make a decision sometimes that seems to be a good choice and turns out to be a poor choice. So when that happens, then, you know, the ideal design of a city manager form of government falls short, because sometimes you can't hold the city manager accountable when he just doesn't have the experience yet to make those good kinds of decisions. So I think at least the topic of having some type of a review advisory committee might be justified, depending on the conditions of the city and the experience of the city manager and some of the other members of the government that report to the council, whether it's a city attorney or a city clerk or the city manager. So that's why I thought it was worthy of having a discussion about it, because we do have some recent history of maybe less than ideally qualified department heads. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments really were to respond to council or Mayor Protem's comments when she replied to my comments. So I'm sorry, because we've had several speakers in between. But you referenced the League of Arizona Cities and Towns documentation, which we are not bound by. Obviously, we go by our city charter. And in the quotation that you read, at no point, at any point in that statement that you read, did it mention hiring. It mentioned a lot of functions, but it never mentioned hiring. And this is what you're proposing, a committee to look at hiring department heads. And so I think we need to continue to abide by our city charter and that this proposal should not move forward.
Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I've been involved in both really large cities, Phoenix in a city manager form of government and the little town of College Park, Maryland. I think one of the concerns that you have to keep at the forefront of decisions like this is what is the appropriate role of the city council and what is the appropriate role of city manager? And I think that, while there, I have no particular history with some of the comments that the mayor and Connie have made about previous hiring decisions, but I think, again, the relationship is between us and the city manager, and I don't think it would be a good move on our part to get into that part of the management process.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Connie, you mentioned something about hiring, you know, that being able to get the best qualified people, and I share that concern. I want to make sure that the department heads, that the city manager is hiring on behalf of the city are the best and most capable we can find. And I will say, I think we've had some really big successes in recent history while I've been on council, and one of them is sitting in the room right now. It's Holger Dura, who was hired by the previous city manager or two city managers ago, and he was an excellent hire. He's been an excellent chief of fire. I worry about if I'm a seasoned municipal employee and I walk into a job interview for the City of Prescott and I see three members of council as part of my interview panel, that would seem like a giant red flag for the city being micromanaged by the city council, and that would make me not want to work there. And I'm speaking as a professional who kind of makes those decisions about who I work with already. And so to me, the chilling effect you could have on bringing quality talent here is far outweighed against whatever enhanced scrutiny you would be able to provide to the city manager. If I showed up to a job like that, I wouldn't know who I was working for. Am I working for those three city council members, or am I working for the city manager? I think that's, it's bad news all the way through. I don't see a single redeeming quality to this plan.
Councilwoman Frerworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I also am not supportive of the proposed solution as outlined. I think it does overstep our role and responsibilities in the form of government that we are aligned to through our charter. What I do think we perhaps should look at moving forward is what is in our charter. And there is a section of our charter, Article III, Section III, under City Manager Powers and Duties, where Point Number Three, it says, "Appoint when deemed necessary for the good of the service, layoff, suspend, transfer, demote, or remove all department heads and employees of the city." That's all his responsibility. And it says, "Subject to such merit system regulations as the council may adopt." I've been here two years. I don't know when the last time the council really went through the merit system and to make sure that's a policy decision. That would be within our space. So that might be, if we're not happy with the results, is to take a look at the merit system. The charter allows us to do that, or maybe just renew when we have a new council in a few weeks. That might be something we do in our first year, is take a look at it to make sure that the system is designed and the policy is designed to produce the results that the citizens expect. But I wouldn't go any further than that section of what the charter allows us to have a right to say in. And that's my thoughts.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it's much easier to work with the city manager on these decisions, and again, allowing the council to have a little skin in the game on this, than it is firing the city manager, which you know, as a council, we can do that if the city manager is not performing. When you're talking about hiring practices of the City of Prescott that have been questionable in some departments for several years, that have cost the taxpayers a lot of money because of the inadequacies, this would be a way for the council to weigh in. Again, it's up to the city manager to make the final decision. It's not the council, but that way, we are moving forward together. And I know from overhearing several council members in the past almost four years that there is a siloing effect in the city, and I think it's detrimental to the staff working with the council. As I said earlier, we are all in this together. We want to move the city forward, I hope. I think we all live here. We pay our taxes. We're trying to do the best we can. Hiring is very, very important in these critical positions. But again, I'm going to agree to disagree with all of you. Whoever's, you know, against it, that's fine, but I do think it would be a great stride forward in working together to move the city forward, because then the council has a little skin in the game in the hiring practices. If we both make a mistake, we own up to it, we let the person go. It'd be better to walk together than apart. And I know, Dallin, I've had many conversations with you about this, and I'd love to hear what you have to say. I know you're not for it, but I'll hear anyway.
City manager, would you like to comment on that?
Sure, thank you. And first, I would just say thank you to the Mayor Protem for bringing the discussion. I think it's an important conversation for us to have about how the city manager and the council are working together. And I do think there are ways that we can work together more closely, particularly with related to hiring process, not necessarily making the decisions together, but, you know, making sure that council members are introduced early on, making sure we've got policies in place, making sure those kinds of things are happening. I do think, you know, there's a lot of good conversation here. I do worry about the insertion of politics into our hiring processes, right? And whoever those three members of councils are, you're one way from a quorum, and while they wouldn't be making the decision, I can do math. And so I worry about the insertion of politics. I worry a little bit about how that, I feel like that actually warps the accountability a little bit, where if we're making a decision like that, and there are three members of council that are saying, "Hey, we like this person," and we make whatever decision, if we find out the decision goes wrong, I'm the only one who gets fired. And so I would rather be fired for a decision that I made and have to move my family and all that kind of stuff. Like, I'm very aware of my accountability to the council. That's what I'm trying to say. Then be told to make a decision or pushed to make a decision, and then I'm accountable for it anyway. So I have that concern. And then I would just repeat what I heard somebody say, which is, maybe it was Council Member Montoya, that I do think in recent history, we've done well. At least, I've only been here 18 months, but I'm really excited about a lot of the department heads and other staff we've hired in that period. I think we've done a good job both of hiring great people and of not hiring people sometimes and waiting and, you know, trying to see what we can do to do better. So I do think we're doing fairly well now. Of course, I'm open to feedback and conversation about that, but I do think there are things we can do outside of a policy, outside of a committee, just to make sure we're working close together, and we could wrap those into, you know, we've got council onboarding coming up, council retreat coming up. We could tie some of those conversations in if that's helpful.
Councilman Gambogi, do you have another comment?
May I? In the Sandler selling system, there's a BS rule, and I'm going to call BS right here. This is not an effort to work together. This is really an effort to invade the space, and this is not delegation. This is interference. I think this is a really bad idea, and we should never even discuss it again.
Well, I think it's pretty clear the consensus here is not to proceed with such a subcommittee creation. And City Manager, Dallin Kimball, I think you have the vast majority of the council continuing to rely on you for your performance and your selection and judgment when it comes to that. So we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Presentation and Discussion Regarding Adoption of the 2024 Building and Fire Codes.
Is this on? Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem, council members. I am Doug Staworski. I am the CBO here for Prescott. Some of you I've met briefly, but it's a pleasure here to present all the work we've done for this 2024 code adoption. So today, we're going to talk about the codes that we are actually going to adopt, and we're talking about the 2024 edition of the family of codes. So it's the building code, the existing building code, fuel, gas, mechanical, plumbing, and residential, as well as the 2023 National Electrical Code. So there is also an energy code in here, and currently, we are under the 2012 edition of that code. As I go through this presentation, you'll learn that we've worked a lot with the local jurisdictions. And so in our effort to balance things out with them and to work in unison with them, we are staying with that 2012 code, because some of the other jurisdictions are coming up to that code. So we're trying to make it more of a uniformity across the region as well. So our purpose and what we're trying to do, our strategic adoption goal, really, so we worked initially, building and fire, to look at all the amendments. We had a lot of amendments in the city code, and we've reduced a great many of those. So our goal was to reduce amendments, to adopt the code as it is written, as it is published by the appropriate agencies, and to use those minimum standards only across the region. So we worked with, as I mentioned, we worked with the other jurisdictions to enable us to do that. So again, it was a huge undertaking, and I think what we're presenting to you today is really a, you know, codes being what they were, they're technical in nature, so I think we've worked really hard to try to minimize them, if you will, and to make it uniform across the region. So that was, those were our goals. And as I said, multi-jurisdictional process, these are the communities that we worked within the process. Of course, we were there at Sedona, Cottonwood, Camp Verde, Dewey-Humboldt, Prescott Valley, and Yavapai County. And our process started, this is kind of the simple steps of what we did, we started with the multiple jurisdictional committee meetings, where we met together with all the jurisdictions. We formed an internal advisory group where we looked at our amendments and the current things we had, all the changes to the code and any amendments we wanted, we thought were important enough to continue forward. Of course, we met with the Yavapai County Contractors Association. We had community meetings, public opinion and out comment periods, and then we had, we did the same thing with our Building Safety Advisory Board. And then we had, we did the same thing with our Building Safety Advisory Board. We presented to them, and, and they proceeded to endorse what we have, are bringing to you today. And so the last bullet is City of Prescott Council, and that's where we are today, to, to look at the work we've done and what we're presenting to you. So we started with the external committee meetings. We had eight of them, December through July, and where we discussed all the wonderful new codes and the amendments and things that were going on. And then again, we did that, again, trying to find a level playing field amongst the communities, so. And I think overall, I've been doing this a long time, and it was, it was pretty unique to see that many jurisdictions work together to try to eliminate a lot of the differences. You know, I know, as a building official, you always hear, well, you know, Prescott Valley doesn't make me do that, right? So we worked hard to try to eliminate some of that, and, and, and you'll see that as we go on. And I talked about, we had 10 internal advisory group meetings, so that was made up of the building department, our community development operations team, the fire department. And we went through every existing amendment that we had, you know, do we need it? This book here really is, was the, the model, and I just bring it in, like, just show you a couple pages, you know? All those Xs, that's all the stuff we cut. So we cut a lot of stuff out in our efforts to just bring it back down to a minimum code. And then our first meeting with the Building Safety and Advisory Board was in July. And that meeting, we covered the process, and we talked about international residential code changes. We met again in September, went through all of the important amendments, and then obviously they recommended and approved that to come to you. So here we are. So we also did two community outreach meetings. Those were hosted by the YCCA. The first one was in Prescott, of course, on August the 20th, and the second one on September the 19th. But we also participated in several other events through, earlier this year. We were at the home show for three days, and we did a lot of talking about the adoption to whoever wanted to listen to us. In addition to that, I, I went to the YCCA board meeting in April as well, and, and explained the, the goals of what we're trying to do here, and get back to minimum standards and simplify the process if we can. And then on July 16th, we went to another meeting, again, this one again, hosted by YCCA, where we just met with the community. And it, it wasn't all about the code adoption, but we were, it was discussed there as well. So, and, and all those meetings and talking to, you know, a lot of different people, the takeaway I got from that process was, when you, when you talk to the, the development committee, and you're talking about reducing the requirements, you know, they're happy. They, that's what they want to see. They were happy that we are, were working to create this consensus or uniformity across the region, where when they work from community to community, they, it's not so much a culture shock wherever they go, so. And just adopting the base code with less amendments, so. When I get into the amendments, there was one comment that was a little negative, and I'll explain that when I get to it, but, and it was from a particular trade, because we had eliminated something from the code that maybe they could charge for or something, I guess, you know? So, but again, that was an effort to just simplify. So overall, I think our community outreach, we had not, got nothing but positive feedback. And again, that was our goal, though. All right, so here we are today, November 4th. We're at the city council study session, where we have a tentative date for November the 18th to vote, for the council to vote on. And then our goal is obviously to have the new codes in place the first of the year. And again, that's, throughout the region, there's a lot of jurisdictions that are trying to make that date happen as well, so. And then we're going to get into the, the specific amendments, if there's not any questions on that stuff already. All right, so first, we'll start with the IRC. That's the International Residential Code. It's probably one of the bigger impacted codes that we deal with, just because of all the housing that we do here in Prescott. So this is a, a big change, this, this code cycle, and it has to do with our ground snow loads, so. Historically, these, there've been tables in the IRC that tell us what the snow loads are, and we have been in a special study area for a couple code cycles. So we've decided, we've just kind of had to keep the snow loading as it was adopted, you know, previously. But in this cycle, there's now a, a new hazard tool. It's an online tool, and I wrestled with this one myself, thinking about its application. But, but this is address specific, so a project comes to town, they get to push in their address, and the hazard tool will tell them all the specific criteria, what the snow loading is for their specific areas. And I, as you, ah, excuse me, as you see on the slide, I mapped several locations.
Excuse me, Doug. Councilman Gamboge, you had a question?
Yeah, sure do. Could you tell me what, you, you're going from 30 pounds per square foot to 47.6 pounds per square foot. How many inches of snow is 30 pounds, and how many inches of snow is 47?
That is a great question. I, I don't know how to answer that, to be honest. Yeah, and you know, that's going to depend on the wetness of the snow and all that stuff. But I'm showing the slide because it just shows that depending on where you are, and those are only seven addresses, so it's going to vary from address to address to address. What I did when I first saw this, because I'll be honest, I had some heartburn with it myself. And I went to FEMA, and every year FEMA puts out a year-end report, and for the last couple cycles, they talk a lot. And if we watch the news, we see this, right? They talked about the extreme weather that's occurring, and occurring, and occurring. And so in my mind, you know, as the building official, I think I would be remiss in not adopting this, and those, if we get that extreme weather, we need that protection for our community, so. And the other jurisdictions are adopting it as well, so it's, it's, it's an important change. All right, Section R 506 is on concrete floors. A vapor retarder shall be installed as required. And this, it's been in the code a while, and our amendment here basically is saying, we had a lot of discussion amongst the community, amongst the other jurisdictions on where to go with this. This year, we actually had a geotech come in and talk to the, to us as a, as a building industry. And so this basically states that depends what the geotech finds on the specific lot is what we'll do. So if they recommend the vapor retarder, then we'll require it. If they don't recommend it, then we're not going to recommend it, so. It's based on us, again, site, site-specific, so.
Councilman Gamboge?
I just Googled it. It's 30, roughly 38 inches of snow to produce 47 pounds per square foot.
All right, this slide deals with the deletion, so we did eliminate two tests out of the, out of the plumbing portion of the residential building code. One is for building sewer testing, and the other one was for the shower lining testing. This is another one of those amendments that was agreed upon jurisdictionally across the region. Primarily, we've never, I've never seen anybody test a building sewer unless it was a pressure line, and we've never done a shower lining test either. And across the board, all the jurisdictions agreed that it wasn't a problem, why, why require a new test now? I did have one plumber, not like that, that was the only negative comment I got out of the whole presentation before, so. All right, then future gas stubs, so I'll just read this one. So the gas stub out for a future appliance shall be provided with a shut-off valve equipped with a sealed cap and a permanent label shall be affixed to the gas stub out. Shut-off valves that state the maximum allowable BTUs per hour rating of the appliance connected to it, and where a gas stub is located above a combustible deck or under a combustible ceiling and roofs, future appliances must meet the manufacturer's specifications and installation instructions regarding proximity to combustible construction. So this amendment is really, was trying to clean up our work process, so. Our, in plan review, as you know, in Prescott, we do a lot of decks, and so everybody wants a gas stub out for their barbecue. However, there are very few barbecues, for instance, that are listed for that application. So plan review is always asking for people to provide the documentation, and then they, they finally say, just put it down as future. They don't want to deal with it. So we tried to come up with a solution that people can build what they want to build, but now we have insurance, we put some signage on it, they're going to know what the BTU hour rating is, and then there's going to be a note on the plan specifying that whatever appliance they put on that deck has to be installed per the manufacturer's listing. And it basically, it just keeps us in a safe zone as a city, that we've provided all the information we can to them, so they, they can succeed in their process, so.
Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that British thermal heating unit?
Yeah, that's correct.
How come we don't have an American?
That's a good question, Mayor. I don't know.
Always been that way.
Old habits die hard, I guess. Okay. So this is Section G 2415 on trenching, so, so this came to our attention probably within the last couple months ago, where we had some issues in town on, so when you put a gas line underground, then you have to have clean soil to backfill it, and we got some complaints from the community and, and from, and from Connie. And so we worked with, with them, and we came up with this amendment to, if site conditions are such that, that we will provide some proper bedding for the gas piping and everything. And this is based on an engineering standard for the city of Prescott, anyway. So it isn't a new invention, it's just borrowing from public works. And the last bullet says, if ABC is used, screened one-inch minus material is required. And the ABC is an acronym for aggregate base course, absolutely. So it's a, it's a sand and rock mixture, if you don't know that, so. Okay.
Mayor Protam, you had a question?
Probably more of a comment. Yeah, we had a couple of complaints, and I think all the council members probably got it from a few subcontractors in town that were not shading some gas piping. And as everybody knows, as they, as it expands and contracts, if it's sitting on a rock or any kind of a large pebble, it's, that's just not an optimal use. And so I think having that inspection to make sure that they are shaded properly is important, because you do have a lot of do-it-yourselfers in the community, and that can create a problem for a lot of neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm happy to see this. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good amendment. I, I agree. All right, so this is, it's, it's still another amendment, but it's an existing one. And basically, again, it's water in attics, water piping just has to be protected so it doesn't freeze, that kind of thing, so. So there, these, these are really the significant amendments. There are other ones that kind of point the direction to other parts of the code or that kind of thing. I'm not really going over those, because it's just more administrative. And some of these amendments as well, show up in both the plumbing code and in the International Residential Code, so, but I don't repeat them here, just because it's redundant, but, so I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Here's a new IRC amendment, so receptacle outlet location. Receptacles are allowed below the countertop at a maximum of 12 inches below the top of the countertop surface, measured to the middle of the box, when the countertop surface overhang does not exceed an inch and a half. So this amendment, again, was another one that was talked about jurisdictionally or across the region, because of some of the changes in the, the current additions of the residential code. And so now they allow for kitchen islands, that you, all you need to do is put a box and a piece of conduit, you don't have to put any receptacle. And as code officials across the region, we didn't, we weren't comfortable with that, because that means people are going to come back later, they're going to do whatever they're going to do, it's never going to be inspected, it's never going to be looked at. So we added this in to give people basically an out. You can still put a receptacle in there if, if you meet this criteria, because this actually was removed from the code, I think, two, two code cycles ago. So rather than just provide for a future box, we're allowing them to put something in, so we at least get to inspect it, and we know it's safe. And that was the IRC. Now, the, that was the most, so these, I know this is exciting stuff, but the IBC gets less, and it gets a little less after that, so. So the International Building Code, so applicability. So the, the city of Prescott shall deem any recommendation from a registered design professional, including the construction documents, to be a requirement. So this is something that we have normally done. So you get a, an engineer's report, and they, and they make the recommendations, and typically that, that's enforced. But rather than it being arbitrary, let's put it in the, in the code, so everybody knows. Again, regionally, the other cities and counties were doing the same thing, so. So this has been a standard practice, but we're just making sure it's codified and everybody, it's there in black and white for everybody to read. So, and there was no, yeah, so it's, it's a good deal. All right, 105.2 is work exempt from a permit, and these are additions. So here in Prescott, re-roofing, if there's no sheathing reply, replaced, we don't require a permit, and the exception is obviously to the historic house or district where something may have to comply with the historical society or something like that, so. And in between these two, it would be in, I can't, I think it's on page 26, no, wait, that's not yet dead. We did add something in here that didn't make it in the slideshow, because it was rather late, and it was an addition, and that was because of House Bill 2447, where an applicant with a history of compliance may be eligible for expedited plan review. So that was added in there. So if, if we have a, an applicant who, who, then we can provide expedited plan review. So that's, that's in the code now. I can't remember what page it is on in your, in your packet, but it is in there. All right, I figured it out. All right, expiration. This isn't a new amendment. Again, this is just the part, the, the bottom two paragraphs just talk about when a permit is expired, and we charge a fee for those permits to be reinstated, and that's in our fee schedule, but it's a, it's a current amendment, there's no change here, but it is a, an amendment. Same thing with the schedule of permit fees, and that, that's in a whole nother ordinance, but we just refer to that in this amendment. So we're not touching fees here, this is just the straight code amendment or adoption. All right, plan review fees. This section references our plan review fees. Again, that's based on the valuation tables and the fee schedule, and there's no change here, but it is an amendment. And then we do charge additional fees. 109.4.1 is an investigation fee, so if somebody builds something without a permit, and, and they get caught, then we can charge it an investigation fee, which is the, basically takes the permit fee only, not the plan review fees, just the permit fee, and they basically have to pay it twice, because there may be things we have to do to determine where we are, so. That's, again, this is not a change, this has been in the code. So, and then, and then also the refund process is in here, too, so. All right, and then inspections and certificate of occupancies, so, and these are to do with the fee structure again, so we do have reinspection fees, we do have change of occupancy fees and, and that kind of thing, and that's in our fee schedule, so this is amendment, but it's, we're not changing anything here as well, it's straight across. And then the Building Safety and Advisory and a Bills Board. Typically, that was under its own ordinance, but this verbiage is all encapsulated in the building code, so part of this process- So part of this process is, as I explained, is we're trying to simplify it. So we're taking that verbiage and putting it back in to the building code where it originated, but we're applying the verbiage that from the city of Prescott that applies, for instance, how the members are picked and who they are and that kind of stuff. So it's not going away, it's not changing, it's just going from a separate ordinance into the building code. So in the in the adoption process, just becomes more more easier, I guess. And the minimum plumbing fixtures, these are all to do with water coolers and drinking water and businesses, and then whether there's a lavatory or hose bib in some of those. These are longstanding amendments, and these are really to do with the more thus the historic area downtown where it's difficult sometimes to to put in new plumbing or something like that. So these are were put in the code, I don't know how many years ago, but to help facilitate that for those existing businesses and everything so they can be code compliant without having to perhaps tear up the whole floor or something like that. All right. Then the international fuel gas code, and this is no change to this again, this is just, I'll just read it. In a common system serving more than one building, shut-off valves shall be installed outdoors of each building. The gas line for shut-off must break ground prior to entering the building and the shut-off installed as well as the dielectric union to the exterior of the building. This has been in code for a long time. I believe it's in in compliance or in agreement with what the gas company is asking for anyway. So but we it's been in the code, so no change. International plumbing code, significant amendments, not many here. Again, all temporary water lines must have frost-free hose bubs and an anti-sulfan valve and be a minimum of 10 feet of required water pipe size. What that's basically telling us is sometimes they want to just put in their backflow or get their meter in. And because of the process of maybe they have a fire permit or and sometimes a fire permit will trigger a bigger water service. So historically, sometimes we've had difficulties with the original line being put in too small and then the fire permit gets issued and that size has to be bigger. So that's why that 10 feet is in there. So even though it doesn't run all the way up to the building, we get to see the size of it and we can verify it at that time. So this is no change again, but it's just continuation. And then there's one more clarification I have on page 26 of your packet. There was a section 903.1 talked about the roof extension. And in the code that it leaves it blank so the local jurisdiction can pick that elevation above the roof for that vent to rise. Historically, it was nine inches. Regionally, we've gone to 12. So there was a there was a typo in your packet, nine or 12? It says nine, 12, but it is 12. And then backwater valves, again, specific to the city of Prescott, so.
Excuse me, Doug. Councilman Gamboge had a question.
These back black backflow valves are on the the spigots for the outside. The spigot is elevated above the hose. So unless there's some violation of gravity, how would how would the water backflow?
Yeah, well, yeah.
How does it how does it flow up to the faucet for a backflow?
So, yeah.
It happened at my yard once where the sewer line was blocked and I took off the cap at my yard and there was so much pressure in the line, it came back out in my yard because the sewer line was backed up. So it's just pressure.
What does that have to do with a water faucet? They're not connected.
We're talking about sewer backflow prevent valve.
Gambo, his comment was about water. So so the hose bib is basically only going to protect the residents from whatever's in the hose, right? So backflow at the meter is going to protect the water, the city water service from whatever's in the house. So then section 714, the backwater valves, so these are longstanding requirements. So we we require the sewage backflow and the retrofit requirements. So basically, again, nothing new. And I think that is it. Any questions?
Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One, you said kind of at the outset, we wanted to get down to a minimum code. So tell me more about that philosophy.
Absolutely. So the code family, if you will, of all the different additions, you know, so there anybody can propose an amendment to the code, but then it goes through the whole cycle of being, you know, discussed and adopted, and we end up with a called the residential code, it's a minimum code. And then jurisdictions like us come along and we heavily amend the code. Oh, we think this is best, this is best. And so we end up with a whole book full of amendments. It's no longer a minimum code, right? So what we were trying to do here is is to reduce those amendments as much as possible, get down to the minimum code, right? You know, meeting with the development community, and I share this with them as well, it's like, I understand how difficult difficult it is to build. So, you know, our job is to enforce the minimum code, whatever that is. And if we have anything specific that we need to amend the code, and we do that through meeting with the community, sometimes it's the council member, whoever, and that's why we have the amendments we do have. But other than that, we're really trying to move down to a minimum code and make it a less, make it easier, if we will, you know.
Okay, and I'm not familiar with the 2012 energy code. So if if the IRC or the IBC is has a 2024 code, we're still sticking with our 2012 code?
So we've.
Why is that?
Right. So again, the we're adopting all the 24 codes except for the energy code, which when we went into the process, we thought that's what we would adopt, right? Bring everything up. But then meeting multi-jurisdictionally over the months, and everybody was on everything from the down to the 2003 edition of the code. So the majority of those jurisdictions opted to come up to the 2012 code, which is knowing what the energy code is, it's it's a pretty big step. It'd be a pretty big step also to go from 2012 to 2024 as far as how much it costs to implement. I think from like the 2003 to 2012, when those things came along, it was like $2,000 or $3,000 per house to implement those energy codes. So so working with the other jurisdictions, we decided that it would be best to keep things uniform across the region and try to all be under the same or similar energy code. So that was the reasoning there.
Thank you.
Well, I know we have some kind of unique situations here in the city of Prescott. We have a lot of slopes. We have a lot of fractured granite underground that can have an impact on things like shading. So whether it's sewer lines or water lines, requiring appropriate shading is one thing. But if it's on a steep slope, all it takes is one crack on the surface to wash out that shading, and then you have damage to those lines. So that's one of the reasons a number of years ago, we outlawed PVC for water lines because we were running into a lot of these failures. And when it comes to a failure of a PVC line, it's not just fixing that one crack because it's going to fail upstream sequentially. And going with ductile iron has a much longer life expectancy in this type of a subsurface environment. So I think when you look at some of those codes, like the amount of snow load, you know, we do get some occasional heavy storms in here, but in most cases, they will kind of solve themselves because they'll, the snow melts and then the load is reduced. So are those load numbers, amount of sustained load, or they're just a one-time maximum protection from weight and load?
That would be a sustained load, so over a period of time. The code doesn't really address that period of time, but it's not just a one, you know, an impact load, for instance. So that makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And also making sure there's adequate shading on those lines. So just because you shade the line, how deep does the shading have to be? I mean, is it is it a couple of inches? Is it six inches? I mean, how much shading do you need to put underneath a water or sewer line to make sure it's protected from pressure above?
Does that specify?
Yeah, it's already specified in the code, so we didn't amend it. It's.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are specifications for that amount?
Yeah, this is Laurel Collins. I'm the senior plans examiner. Yeah, it's generally depending on which code site, which code book you're in, it's three to six inches under the pipe. And then our depth is generally 24 inches because of our frost line, it has to be six inches below frost. So.
Okay.
Mayor Protam, you had a question?
Yeah, and Doug, thank you for doing this. I'm sure that, I don't know if Sandy left, but the contractors have to be very happy about this. Oh, there she is, I can't see her behind the lectern. She's shrinking away. You know, one thing I want to point out is these codes are meant to protect the consumer. And a lot of people don't understand that. But the negative part of it is something, the perfect example is the snow loads. That can mean the difference between thousands of dollars depending upon the size of the house because of what it takes to make a trust package that will adapt or adopt those snow loads. That's a lot of money for the developers to come out of pocket. But if everybody remembers a few years ago, I don't think you were here, Doug, but we had like a snowmageddon. And a few houses, the historic homes in the downtown areas, did partially collapse because they couldn't take that snow. So we do have some changes in the weather, even Prescott has been hit with that. So I do see the benefit of it. But again, it's it's all about the money. And, you know, the for just for the listeners, and I know these people know this, but the construction industry is changing a lot. We have a lot of lawyers involved now, and we have a lot of liability. And it's in every interest to have a licensed bonded contractor that understands his liability and relieves the city of a lot of this. We're the oversight, we're the checkers to make sure they comply with some of this stuff. But it all does come at a cost, and again, it's to protect the consumer. So thanks for, I'm glad you're standardizing this. I know it's very difficult to work across different lines because it is, especially if you're new in the industry, you don't realize what you've got to do. And Chino is different than what you do in Prescott. So I'm glad you're doing it and thanks for minimizing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we put a specific definition of snowmageddon in there? Probably need to. I know we did. Do we have any public comment?
We do now, Mayor.
Okay.
Come on up. Yeah, you need to fill out one of those.
Ma'am, you need to fill out a comment card in the back and then you can come up to the podium and speak.
Okay. Yeah, some people forget there's thousands of people watching this online, and they need to know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resemble that.
Do I have to do anything special? There we go. Excellent. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Anthony Valdez, Division Chief of Community Risk Management for the Fire Department and also the City Fire Marshal. I'm here to present the proposed amendments to the 2024 Fire Code for your consideration this afternoon. Similar to Doug's agenda for today is we're going to be just introducing the purpose, our strategic approach to what we are, what we have been doing for the last several months, provide you some specific significant amendments. As Doug mentioned, there are others that are administrative in nature and so forth that would be a little bit longer of a presentation that I don't know is necessary, but I'm happy to go over them, they're all in your packet, and where we are going in the future with it. So our purpose was similar to Doug's is predominant.
Excuse me, Anthony, before we get too deep into the fire codes, do you have a public comment on the building codes?
Sandy, did you want to come up now or do you want to wait until fire is done?
I would love to wait until fire is done. Thank you.
All right, please proceed.
Yes, sir. So Fire Code ultimately is attempting to provide the public safety at our core mission, also aligns with the Fire Department's core mission, and working with the Building Department and Community Development Team in order to help standardize the codes. And again, similar to Doug's mission of trying to minimize our number of amendments in the city to make it more concise and easier to use by our development and building community as well as our internal customers as far as the Fire Department staff, the plan reviewers and inspectors and so forth. So our strategic adoption goals have been a unified approach between building and fire. Fortunately, Doug and I align very well in that, being working in other jurisdictions, building officials and fire marshals sometimes don't have the best relationship. And I'm extremely fortunate that I have a phenomenal relationship with Doug. And we we approach things very similarly in trying to meet the mission of the city. And it's been a great, great honor to work with him. We also want to reflect the latest national safety standards similarly because the codes are a national consensus code. We believe strongly in the ability of that process to occur and create what's best practices across with minimum amendments. And again, providing consistency for our developers and contractors as well as our internal inspectors. If you have a lot of amendments that sometimes become a lot of conflict with the model code and what other developers and designers are used to working with, it creates a lot of confusion and creates an opportunity for more interpretation and and so forth. So we wanted to just make that a little bit more streamlined. Reduces our overall community risk, enhances our community safety by also reducing that risk and including all of the more modern techniques and abilities to use the code to our advantage. And it creates uniformity across our multi-jurisdictional region. We're a little bit more unique than the Building Department in that Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority is is pretty much our biggest partner. And we are the only municipal fire department that is serving most of Yavapai County. So all the other ones are fire protection districts. And so they have a little bit different needs and requirements for them to fulfill their need to enforce the Fire Code in those municipalities as well as the unincorporated county. However, CAFMA and us have worked really diligently to try to make it as standard as possible between both areas so that we can, again, increase our effectiveness with our community, our development community and so forth, and so that it's not too much of a shock between the two jurisdictions. Similarity to Doug, we are also proposing to repeal our separate ordinance of our Fire Board of Appeals and include it into the model code. We also have amended those sections that are applicable to the specifics of how the city prefers to select those members and those qualifications and so forth. So we did amend that Appendix A in this case, a little bit to reflect those particulars to ensure that we were still meeting the intent of what the city would like to do. It's a little bit different than the model code. So moving forward in the significant amendments that we did put in the Fire Code, one of those is section 102.5, the application of residential code. The Fire Code is specific to what is applicable to those structures that are built under the residential code versus a commercial structure that's built under the international building code. And so we had a unique situation here in Prescott that we needed to amend and reflect that specific need. And that's the red section, and it's just allowing that the section of 903.2.8.4 of this particular code is also applicable to those residential structures that are under the authority of the IRC. And we'll get into that here in a second of what that reflects. Also, one of the amendments that I was remiss in putting in for your presentation, but it was asked of one of the council members, so I felt like it was necessary to discuss. And it was the modification for when an outdoor assembly event requires a permit. The model code requires 1,000. The model code requires 1,000, expected attendance of 1,000 people, and we are proposing amending that to 500. Those reasons are, in order for us to reduce the risk, anytime we have a large assembly, even at 500 folks, that has an increased risk to the people that are there, whether there's alcohol sales, whether we're refining folks from immediate egress pass and so forth. But it's also an ability for us to review it and ensure that emergency service personnel can also serve that area if we were to have some sort of unfortunate event. So moving on-
Councilwoman Ferworth had a question.
Thank you. As someone who used to do lots of community organizing, moving it from 1,000 to 500 now brings some other organizations that have never had to deal with this before, not the big festivals and the big concerts, now you're into much more local activities. So how are we going to get this word out to people so they don't find out the hard way that they've always been doing it a certain way, and now all of a sudden they have to get some other kind of a permit also done? Even if they don't get a permit from, for example, the Yavapai County to use the courthouse, is it because now they're in the city of Prescott that they also, still, even if Yavapai County says, "Fine, you don't need a permit," will we make them get a permit for this reason? So I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this and make sure that we do a really masterful job of communicating this through social media, through our newspaper and others, so that people don't get caught off guard with this change going into effect.
Thank you, I appreciate that comment. And we will work very strategically in making sure that messaging is put out, partnering with our new Community Engagement Manager, Danielle, in determining what the best strategy is for that, as well as the city already has a existing special event permitting process through REC Services and partnering with those folks as well, so that we can get their stakeholders involved in that communication. There's enough of the changes between the 2018 Fire Code and the 2024 Fire Code that's going to affect special events in general. And so we've already developed a framework and how we're going to start outreach and communication to all of those stakeholders, the special event organizers themselves, tent contractors, bouncy houses, inflatable contractors and so forth, so that we can all ensure that we're working together into this next event season so that we can make sure that we're helping everyone be as successful as possible.
Thank you. If there's anything that we can do on council to get those communications and also route them to our friends and our contacts that we know get involved in these things, so we just can't over-communicate enough with the change. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, ma'am. So moving on to another significant amendment, Section 102.7.1.1 is a new amendment that we are proposing. And this is just in order to streamline any potential conflicts that we may have with our general engineering standards that are adopted and enforced in the city. There are times where the Fire Code and the GESs overlap, and they do have some conflict. And so rather than having to go through every one of the Fire Code sections in addition to the GES and amend the Fire Code to make it that much more difficult to understand and use, we put this language in the code so that it allows us to have the opportunity to determine which is the most restrictive and that would prevail. Real quick example, our, the Fire Code requires three feet of clearance around all fire hydrants from any kind of vegetation or permanent structures or so forth, so that firefighters can operate those hydrants effectively. In the GES, it is actually five feet, and that is due to allowing public works the ability to maintain them. So in that particular case, the five feet would be more restrictive, and therefore that would prevail rather than the three feet in the Fire Code. Temporary membrane structures and event, special event structures and tents, again, as I mentioned, there's some changes that are going with all special events between the two additions. In this particular case, we're just adding the need to permit inflatable amusement devices. That is a new definition, the 2024 International Fire Code. It's one of those fascinating ones that I am interested in proposing an amendment to the National Code cycle on this, because although it's not required in the model code necessarily to get a permit for it, that's still an applicable, there's an entire section in the Fire Code that's applicable to these. So you're not, you're not necessarily required to get a permit, but you're still required to follow all the rules without knowing or getting an inspection to do so. I am also pretty passionate about these types of events and these devices, because in my previous jurisdiction, I have unfortunately have responded to several events where there were some pretty catastrophic injuries that had occurred to children and adults and families that were pretty devastated in what those results looked like, in those situations that were not properly permitted or inspected because the contractor failed to do so. So this is something that, although a lot of folks look back and say, "Oh, what are the possibilities, or what's the probability of that happening?" I can speak to at least half a dozen that I've had to respond to and specifically work to mitigate. So that's why I take a little bit more of a passion to it when you see it firsthand. In Section 503.1.1, Buildings and Facilities, this is the access requirements. There is a leading language above it. We decided to only include the changes that we're proposing. This is a little bit of a less restrictive requirement. The model code requires access to be within 150 feet of all exterior portions of building from a fire apparatus access roadway. In this case, if we are seeing a commercial building that is constructed of non-combustible materials and is provided with a fully sprinkled building, then it seems a little restrictive to require that much access. This is in collaboration also with our Operations Chief in reviewing some of those applications and how we effectively respond to structures. And we felt that this was allowing a little bit less restrictive component to help us facilitate those more difficult lots that are being constructed in the city to effectively still get a building built in those areas. 503.1.2 for additional access and egress roads. So everything in red is the change from the model code. We are just proposing to add the requirement of also requiring egress roads. There is not a specific definition of that, and a lot of the model code and provisions indicate that you have to have two points of access to a lot of developments or commercial buildings when you meet certain thresholds and so forth. However, we have received a lot of feedback from our development community that the definition is specific or the requirement is specific to access. And so when we refer to some of our bigger, single-family residential developments and we're requiring a secondary access, in, really in our minds, we're thinking it's going to be intended mostly for egress if we needed to evacuate that community, we have gotten a lot of pushback that we don't have the legal right to require an egress and access, only access. So I know that this is a topic that has been discussed and a need in the city, as well as how we're seeing and how we want to reduce our risk in a lot of these developments, knowing that we are very prone to wildland fire threats and so forth. And so this is allowing that to occur. The intent behind this section will be that all developments will start off being required to provide both of these components, and then we can work with those developers and contractors to determine if that's, if it ends up being proposed to us and it's just infeasible for us to do that, then we can work to see if we can determine an alternative method that meets an equivalent level of protection.
So this only applies to new developments?
Correct. New developments and new commercial.
Councilman Gamboge.
Do we have developments now that don't have a second? Yeah? Any idea how many?
Probably the majority that's existed prior to the last 10 years, maybe? Moving on, Section 5607, the blasting code. So historically, the city of Prescott had its own standalone blasting code that was incorporated within the Fire Code adoption. We are proposing at this time, because of the codes have evolved and have developed a lot more modern techniques to help protect the community regarding blasting in the model code itself, we're proposing to remove and repeal that blasting code that was local. It was also very outdated. It was pre-2010 when that was created, and so there was a need to upgrade it to a new version of it either way. However, the current model code provisions meet majority of what that code was in the 24 addition. And we, so therefore, we're proposing to remove it, but we did include some amendments that we felt like were still very specific to the city of Prescott's needs. Also, in doing a Google search of all the other communities in the state of Arizona that I knew did a lot of blasting, they amended, they also got rid of their local blasting codes, incorporated the model code, but amended exactly what we were looking to amend as well. So it's in alignment with statewide jurisdictions that do a lot of blasting, which is, I think, is going to be beneficial to our blasting contractors, because we do and have received a fair amount of feedback on either how restrictive the city of Prescott's is, or outdated, or how it's different than a lot of the other ways of folks that are doing it. So hopefully that'll be a great improvement while still providing a reduced risk to the community. So similar to the Building Department, we did internal advisory group meetings with the Building Department and Comm Dev Ops team. We did internal Fire Department meetings with our operations team and other stakeholders. We looked at all of our existing amendments and discussed those often very passionately, and what our proposed amendment discussion was going to look like as well. Again, Fire Board of Appeals, we really worked hard to try to get this in front of the Fire Board of Appeals before today and getting it in front of you. However, as most of you know, we just established essentially a quorum of the Fire Board of Appeals a few weeks ago, and unfortunately, due to scheduling, we were unable to get a quorum scheduled until December 4th. So it is still our intent to get this in front of them for their review and consideration. However, it just didn't work out in time for us to get this, to keep the timeline that we're trying to maintain with our Comm Dev partners. And then our stakeholder input, we-
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. So if, I understand what you're trying to get done. If the Fire Board of Appeals does come up with different needs, different whatever, then what are you going to do? Come back to us with just the suggested amendments that they, that you're aligned to what they want, and we'll just amend on the go after this?
I think that is one strategy.
Because I think you were looking for next week to bring all of this for a vote, so we'll be-
Correct.
-voted as of next week. December 4th is well after, so what are we going to do? Stay on that timeline?
That would be our preference at this point, and hopefully, I have met with one of the board members independently and discussed what we were trying to do, and also offered that we were presenting this to you all today, and if they were able to watch it or be able to review it, then provide feedback and so forth. Ultimately, though, if they end up having significant heartburn over anything, then I think one of our strategies would be to bring it back before you all for consideration. Also, I would like to just acknowledge the fact that, I'm sure most of you have recognized that the Wildland Urban Interface Code is not part of this proposal at this point. We decided because of the significance of the changes that would be occurring, and mostly because it's updating it from the 2012 addition to the 2024 addition, it needs a little bit more special attention to our community outreach and our, working with our YCCA partners and making sure that they have an effective amount of time to provide us the right feedback and so forth. So we are proposing to bring that back before you all for consideration in first quarter of next year. And with that, any questions or discussion?
So the WUI requirements will also be addressing some of the firewising expectations and guidelines.
That is correct, sir.
Good. Councilman Gamboge had another question?
Yeah, Division Chief Valdez, excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So, Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. Sorry, one more that I sent ahead of time. My question about the code change regarding the numbering on not only new buildings, but also existing buildings. And so because it's existing, that affects potentially a lot of people in the community. So what's our plan to educate, outreach, get HOA boards, all those things, ready to go? And this includes Daily Courier, we're going to need you too. Thank you.
Yes, we plan to do some outreach with that. In this particular code section, historically, how it's applied is, there isn't necessarily a team of folks that are going out and inspecting existing structures for addresses. It's usually used when there's an identified problem. So our crews report back to us, "Hey, we keep going to this building, it's really difficult to find the address," or so forth, or "We go into this neighborhood and it's very difficult to determine the house numerals," and so forth. So then that's when we would go in and work with the stakeholders at that point. This is really applicable mostly for new, new buildings and so forth, to ensure that that's there. But we will do some outreach out there and just help educate folks in what those best practice standards are for addressing in order to help emergency services find them.
Yeah, I do think most of the single-family homes, a lot of those HOAs are using HomeCo, maybe one or two other companies. And right now, when you put the number on your house, you're basically putting the number on your mailbox. So I do think if we could make sure that we're communicating to HomeCo or any other kind of companies that service multiple single-family homes, because people's mailboxes unfortunately get hit all the time and knocked down, and when they come back with a new mailbox, it would be good that the HOA and HomeCo understand that you have to apply the new standard now. So this is for me just something that, again, that doesn't normally fall in our bailiwick, but suddenly, when the word you used, "existing," it became a lot more of an education and communication need for everyone to understand. I actually went reading the pre-work on Sunday for this section, went out with a ruler to my own mailbox to see if I was meeting the standard, which, phew, I am. But, you know, that's one of those things that you don't even think about. You would never think to look in the city code to find an answer like this. You would always go to your HOA Architectural Review or some other local group, and if they don't know, they'll tell you what they used to have. So it's just for me, something that we want to make sure, that we're doing all this work with 478 to get you quickly to people's house, and it'd be a shame that they can't get the house. Thank you.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment now?
Sandy Griffiths.
Sandy Griffiths, Yavapai County Contractors Association. We all know that codes are essential. And I'm here to support your Chief Building Official, Mr. Doug Stararsky, I call him Doug Star Wars for short, and the magnificent Development Services Team, along with Fire Chief Holger Dura, Deputy Chief Fire Marshal Anthony Valdez. We've had many conversations over the past months discussing these codes, what should be in them, what should be taken out, and it's been a meaningful conversation. And I hope that you, as the elected officials for the city of Prescott, know the demonstrated sense of spirit and compassion that your team has to make a more, a more, that's not proper English, to make a better environment to protect our community and citizens. So we do wholeheartedly support these codes. We're having further conversation with Deputy Chief Fire Marshal Anthony Valdez on the WUI Code, Mayor. We have outlined our educational series, what we're going to do for outreach, and we're looking forward to accepting and supporting that code as well. So I want you to, again, be so proud of this team, the hard work that they've done. Our meetings with the Chief Building Officials, they went on for months. They were a minimum of two-hour meetings, sometimes three, and your team was there religiously monthly. So it's pretty impressive what has taken place and what's been done to make this a better, safer, healthier community. So thank you for your support of the work from this fine community and the individuals you have behind me.
Angela Baumann.
Hi, my name is Angela. I work for B&amp;W Fire. We're a fire protection contractor in Prescott Valley. We're a fire protection contractor in Prescott Valley. I don't know, this might be more of an appropriate question for Chief Valdez, but where can we find the new amendments to, I guess, review more in full? Just to ensure that our company is doing everything correctly and anticipating everything?
I'd be happy to send them directly to you. I'll get your contact information right after meeting, if that works for you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. That's it. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All very good. Any other comments or concerns from the council? Hearing none, then this study session is adjourned and we'll reconvene at 3 o'clock for the voting meeting.